Through Zoom and in the future, this is being recorded so that others can watch this on the town's TV channel and whatnot. And I want to make sure that everybody benefits from all the questions asked and all the answers to those questions. So I don't want to lose anything in crosstalk. Hold on one second. All right. Can you hear me better?
Put it on.
That's what I just did. All right. So this may not be functioning. I'll try to talk loudly. So we're going to run this like a town meeting in the sense that I want people to ask me a question. I'll refer the question to the person that can best answer the question, and then we won't have crosstalk. And the reason is, is because we're recording it. People tonight are watching it via Zoom. And we're also recording it, and it'll be replayed on the town's television channel and the online stream. And I want people to benefit from all the answers to all the questions that are asked. There is a microphone in front. It's a bit of a pain, but chances are, we're not going to be able to record your question. So if you have a question, come up and ask the question into the microphone. Do ask, you leave your mask on for that purpose, because it will be sort of a shared device, multiple people, assuming we have multiple questions. I think that's all I wanted to touch on. So at this point, we'll start things off. We've got called order, which we'll call it. What time do we have here?
6:40.
6:40. And we'll do our pledge of allegiance. I had it on and off, and it didn't seem to be broadcast. Mike, you want to lead us?
I certainly will.
Thank you, sir.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, everybody. No other adjustments, Katrina?
All right. Yeah.
Got it. All right. So our primary reason for being here is to inform everybody where we stand with plans for the upcoming school year. Thank you. I should. So I will give it to Katrina, and she will start the presentation.
Thank you, Brett. If I set that there, can everybody hear me okay? Awesome. I've got that cheerleader voice, so give me the signal if you need me to stop using the microphone. So, go LCS. I think it must be, we maybe need to turn the heat up a little bit more, get people, you know. Okay. So we have just a few things to cover before we start here. First of all, I really want to thank the teachers for all of their input. They've been working hard over the summer, working extremely hard, really, since the pandemic started doing things they've never done before. It's like every single teacher is a brand-new teacher. And they've put their heart and soul into it and done an incredible job. And they've continued right on through the summer, particularly as learners, watching and learning so that we can improve upon everything that we did in the spring and make sure that we come back with an even better experience for your students as best as possible, excuse me, for your children. One of the things we want to really try to do here tonight is to really stay with the things that we can control. You'll notice in the presentation that Dawn and I will be talking through, you know, time is of the essence. We have a lot to do and to get ready for. And so we try to spend our time not conversing too much about things that we can't control. We know there are a lot of challenges. We know that there are politics that surround this issue. We know it's hard for parents. A lot of our staff are parents, too. We've experienced the childcare issues ourselves. We understand. We're in the boat together. We certainly wish we could solve all those challenges with a magic wand, but I have not found a magic eight ball yet that gives me the right answer to solve all the challenges. I also appreciate the leadership that Dawn has shown in working towards finding creative solutions that will get us to the best place that we can possibly be. And I think you'll be pleased when you see the ideas that are here tonight. So again, we don't want to debate things that we can't resolve. We've actually been throwing around a lot lately a term that we actually use in negotiations when we're doing those, where we're hard on issues and soft on people. So we know the issues are hard, but we try to be really kind to the people. We are working within the main Department of Education and the CDC framework for reopening. And within that document, there are many, many non-negotiables that we have to follow as a school. And so those pieces are within our plans. They do create some challenges, and there are a few places where we're going to be asking parents going forward for some assistance with a few things so that maybe our plans can be even better. But we're working on opening under the safest conditions possible for everyone who not only learns here at LCS but also works at LCS. There are still many unknowns, so I'll just tell you that right up front. Athletics, after-school programming, extracurricular activities, we don't have answers to those things yet. Right now, our priority is what the school schedule will look like and how we can configure the transportation. And then we'll get to those things and answer them as we're able. So we appreciate your parents, your patience with that. We have a parent memo that will be coming out again. Not a survey, just a memo. Thank you to everyone who gave us feedback through the survey. And we'll be asking you if you fully selected the remote option, to confirm that for us by noon on Monday at the latest, so that we can firm up the plans that we have and make sure that we can do it, do what we need to, in terms of the numbers we can have in the classrooms. If you selected remote learning as a parent for your child and you want to change to in-person, we need to know that ASAP. So please call the school or email, actually Dawn McVale, and we'll put that email up for folks so that we know that. And we'll cover that again at the end. And finally, again, we're going to go through some of this in the plan, but one of the challenges we have right now is transportation. We are fortunate that we do have 77 passenger buses, so we do have bigger buses. But it looks like we're going to only be able to have 26 students at a time on those buses. And in our survey, a very large number of parents indicated that their child or children need transportation either one way or both ways, more than what we typically see on the bus run. And, you know, we know with surveys, you know, you can easily, it's easy to click a wrong button, or maybe you're just not sure yet, like a lot of things. So if you indicated that your child is riding the bus and you don't need bus transportation, or if there's any way that you have alternate transportation, we're encouraging you to please use it, use any alternative that you can. Because with 26 students per bus, as you can imagine, that is multiple bus runs, which means kids will be arriving and departing at staggered times. And so the fewer kids riding, the better, so that we can keep a cohesive learning plan for how we start. And then finally, there's guidance that's coming daily. There was additional guidance that came out this morning. I haven't even had a chance to sift through all of it, some of it, but I don't have actually the final official guidance even on transportation. So, you know, we're working within those plans and doing what we can. Sometimes it does mean that we have to make changes to what we were doing, but at this point, we are out of time, and we need to go with the information we have as of now, and that's what we're going to do. So, yes, Brett?
I just wanted to add one thing regarding transportation for those of you who have high school students. The common, normal order of business where, you know, the kids can come to school, wait in school, and then jump on a bus and go home, and if you've got, you know, your common drop-off point changes, sometimes a note will come to the principal asking that, you know, a child would jump on another bus to go to a different place and things like that. In all likelihood, we are simply not going to be able to accommodate that. You know, specifically, high school students coming to the school here is also potentially just impossible. So there's going to be a pretty substantial difference at the upper grade levels for the high school kids as it relates to transportation. So what that exactly is going to be is unknown, but it's, you know, a thing to think about if you've got an older student.
Thank you very much. Okay. So working through the information that we have here for you for our reopening plans. Our reopening vision is that we'll be able to provide all our students with rigorous and meaningful learning and appropriate social-emotional support. We believe, and I say all of our teachers believe, that our students learn and thrive best when they are in school five days per week. We also have the health and safety of our students and staff at the forefront of our decision-making. We have planned for four potential scenarios based on the current parent survey results and in compliance with the main DOE and the CDC reopening requirements. Those plans may be changed as needed due to community health conditions or a possible resurgence of COVID-19, as I'm sure you're aware. So the goal of our reopening plan is to ensure that the Illinois School Department is providing to the best of its ability each student with a variety of instructional modalities to help them stay on pace in their learning. We do recognize there is no one-size-fits-all solution. Multiple means of engaging students and supporting families may be necessary. That may vary by grade level. Therefore, we've built this plan on the following requirements that are mandated by the main Department of Education. The requirements that I'm going to go over in the next few slides are non-negotiable. Our commitment to health and safety, so obviously, we'll comply with those MDOE/CDC requirements. We have a student and parent handbook draft that is ready, and we will also have a staff handbook that outlines all the required safety protocols and procedures. And for parents, we'll be asking all parents to sign off that they've reviewed that, received and reviewed that, before their students start school. We'll be providing personal protective equipment, or PPE, for students and staff, and that includes face masks and face coverings. We've ordered gloves, hand sanitizer, masks, gowns, infrared thermometers, everything that you can imagine, that you would think that we would need, disposable wipes. And many of those items are starting to ship. A few items have arrived. And of course, as with all districts, our reopening will be contingent on having those things here in time. But as of today, I anticipate that we'll have everything here. In order to limit exposure, only students and staff will enter the building once the school year starts on September 8th. And this will include drop-off and pickup times. We will communicate numbers one to three that I just reviewed to staff, families and students through multiple means, and will provide training as necessary and as required by the MDOE return-to-school guidelines. But universal use throughout our school of proven mitigation tactics such as wearing masks or face coverings, maintaining physical distance, which is six feet, and washing, cleaning hands frequently, and monitoring health for symptoms of COVID-19 will be required. Symptom screening for all staff and students needs to happen at home before students can come to school. Again, we'll be required to provide information to parents and guardians regarding what that needs to look like, but they must conduct self-checks for symptoms prior to boarding any buses or entering the school buildings each day. Any person, any student or staff member showing symptoms must report their symptoms to the school and not be present on school that day. Physical distancing. In our facility, adults must maintain six feet of distance from others to the extent possible, and we've configured our rooms to be able to allow this. Students must maintain a three-to-six-foot distance from each other, and that three-foot distance is only supposed to be really for short periods of time, and then they return to the six-foot requirement. Desk will be placed six feet apart in order to maintain the minimum three-foot distance when moving from a desk to other areas of the room. And six feet of physical distancing is required for students while they're eating breakfast or lunch or eating at any time, because they will be taking their masks off during that time. I guess this would be a good place to say that we anticipate that the first four days of school will be spent on a lot of routines, as they typically are, but this is a whole different level of routines that we'll be doing with our students. But we'll be working on this with them, and I would encourage you, if your child is not accustomed to wearing a mask, to please start now in short intervals so that they can get used to that. And hopefully, cooler temperatures are going to prevail for us. Adults, including all educators and staff, will be required to wear face mask covering, and it has to cover the nose and the mouth. Students are required to wear face masks also that covers their nose and their mouth, and those have to be worn by all students on the bus. Face shields are a potential alternative for students with medical behavioral or other challenges who are unable to wear a mask or a face covering. And the same will apply to staff with medical or health reasons for being unable to wear a face covering. Face shield?
Yes. So our Zoom participants are really not able to understand you, and I think it's the mask, so I think you're going to have to take the mask.
Sure. Yep. Thanks, Dawn. Face shields can be worn in place of a face covering, but they must extend below the chin and back to the ears. And again, all of those items should be here, and some of them are already here, such as face shields, for example. Hand hygiene. All students and staff in school must receive training in proper hand hygiene, and so we will be doing that. They must wash their hands or use sanitizing gel when they enter the school, before and after they eat, before and after they dawn or remove a face mask, after they use the restroom, before and after the use of playground and shared equipment, and upon entering and exiting a school bus. And personal protective equipment. There will be additional safety precautions required for school nurses or staff that support students in close proximity, such as the school administrative assistant or educational technicians, anytime that distance is not possible, or when students require physical assistance. And those precautions at a minimum require eye protection, face shields and goggles, and a mask or face covering. And classrooms or areas that have been used by an individual that have been diagnosed with COVID-19 will be closed off and for thorough cleaning and sanitation to take And for return to school after illness, we are awaiting some additional guidance on what this will look like in terms of how long students have to stay home or staff members. But for now, we know that they have to use home isolation until they meet that criteria which will be set forth for returning to school. So at this point, Dawn, I'll turn it over to you. And do you want to swap places with that, or you just want the microphone?
Okay. So I'm assuming that the mask has to come off to be able to understand for the Zoom participants. So first of all, let me just tell you, there's no argument. Our commitment, we believe wholeheartedly that the best option for teaching and learning is in-person five days a week. I believe that wholeheartedly. We all do, so I need you to know that before we even start. However, the physical limitations of this building and our staff numbers are determining our capacity to do that, and we're driven by these requirements. So our school may have to offer a hybrid program because of the required safety protocols. We didn't come up with these protocols. You can go right to the DOE and look at that document. I think it's like, I don't know, 30 pages or something, and it outlines all of this. And believe me, I have pored through it looking for loopholes. I can't find them. So these are the things that we have to do, and we don't have any control over that. So we also have a commitment to improving distance learning. So when this first happened in March, you know, it was the onset, and we literally had a day to prepare. And not only did we only have a day to prepare, teachers were not used to teaching this way. We had no idea what we were doing. I didn't know how to lead this way. They didn't know how to teach this way. And they did the best they could, given their skill set that they had at the time. So we know that that has to be better if there's any distance learning happening at all. And there is distance learning happening, because we have 17, 13% of our students who are staying home, and they're doing it remotely completely. And so we know that that has to be better, and that will be better. We spent five days in June, learning and going through some different methods and platforms that we can use. Almost every one of the teachers in this building have attended multiple webinars and courses and classes to try to make this the best they possibly can. So, you know, while they did their best to provide that continuity, now we're going to do better. We know we have to do better, and we know that we can do better. And that will involve synchronous and asynchronous learning and instruction. And so I'm going to talk a little bit about what that means. So synchronous instruction is when the learning occurs at the same time but not in the same place. So an example of that would be a remote student participating in live instruction at the same time as their peers. So this is an example of synchronous learning, because there are people on the Zoom getting exactly what you're getting here. You're here in person. This is exactly what a classroom might look like for a teacher. And notice that we already had some struggles with that. It's not perfect. They couldn't hear, so the people at home might not be able to hear. But Mrs. Kane didn't know that they couldn't hear, and we don't necessarily have another adult in the room who's going to be able to monitor Facebook or their email and say, "Oh, we're getting reports from the people at home that they can't hear." So just be aware of that. Asynchronous learning is a lot of what you saw back in March, April, May, right? So the teacher would either record something that the student could watch at a later time, or they would go back and look at a video, and they did it on their own time, just meaning it's not in sync. They're not doing it all at the same time. Here are the survey results. Here's what we use to create our plans. 87% of the parents want their students back in the classrooms here. 13% chose the remote learning option. We hear you, and we get that. But what I have to tell you is that we've set up a classroom, the third-grade classroom, and it's one of the bigger ones, 12 desks, six feet apart. That's with a new storage shed and emptying the room of everything else. All the extra tables, all the extra bins, all that stuff has to go to make room for students to have the desks six feet apart. Because if you put desks three feet apart, you are now a foot and a half away from people when I get up to walk between those desks, and that's not allowed by the requirements. So 12 is what I can fit in a classroom. And that's with kids. Let me just tell you, let me clarify that. So in, for example, the second-grade classroom where we've set up 12 desks, you're going to have a second grader who is literally 30 feet from the whiteboard. I just want you to know that ahead of time. I know I'm old. I can't see what's on the whiteboard at 30 feet away. It's really difficult. So if you are having a hard time hearing, you know, we wouldn't have, we have a microphone, so it's okay. But that's what it's going to feel like, just so you know that. All right. Here's planning. This is based on exactly what we have for data from you right now, from your survey results. This is what we can do based on who said they wanted to be here. So it's not just about, you know, the 116 students we have, it's the distribution of those students. So because of the numbers in K2, and because of those people who said they were doing remote, we can right now fit those K2 students in their classroom 100% of the time. That's what we can do right there. Third through eighth grade is a different story. For example, I have 19 students in third grade, two adults in that classroom who both need their six feet of distance around them at all times. I can't fit 19 third graders in that room. Same thing with fourth grade, there's too many. Same thing with fifth grade and sixth grade, there's too many. So based on what people have chosen, to date, we would be looking at some kind of a hybrid model where some students were here 50% of the time, and other students were here another 50% of the time. Anything different than that, for the people who have chosen it, would require additional classroom spaces and additional staff to staff them. Are we taking questions now, or are we continuing? Can we go through the four plans first and then ask questions? Okay. Thank you. Plan B. This is based on more parents after tonight emailing me and saying, "I want my kid in school." So if more parents say, because we're on the cusp in the second grade of having too many, if some of those parents say, "Now I want my child in school," K1 can attend full-time, and two through eight would have to be a hybrid model. Here's Plan C. If after tonight, some parents say, "You know what? This is not going to work for my kiddo to be in the building this way," and they choose to keep their kids home, we would adjust that. So if we could bring those numbers down to 12 students in a classroom, then we can get them all here. That's what we would need to do to make that happen. There would still be remote students, obviously. And then the Plan D is the worst-case scenario, that there's a change in our county's status, because what you probably have seen is that it's a green or a yellow or a red status. Green means, it doesn't mean it's safe to open business as usual. Green means it's safe to open if you can meet all of these safety requirements. This is the model that helps us meet those, these four models that we've just shown you. But if something happens and that goes to yellow or red, we could possibly have to go to a fully remote learning situation, such as MDI has put out for their first month of September. So those are our four plans. And I also, I'm just going to reiterate, this is just a little bit more about those transportation challenges, about if you can transport your child and not utilize the bus, that would be great. We might be able to get them into two runs and not have to have this staggered pickup and drop-off, which would lengthen their school day, which would be great. The other piece of that is just what Brett said. So in the past, you know, it's not unusual to call Ms. Betty at 2:30 and said, "I need my kiddo to go on Dean's bus over to so-and-so's house because something has come up, but Dean's bus is already laid out. We have enough seats to accommodate the kids on that bus. We don't even know if we have enough." So we won't be able to make changes on the fly that way. And then I just want you to know that if there are more creative ways to help you, I'm open, we're all open to listening to those. So here's what we can do from this point forward, to the best of our abilities, is to communicate the updates and changes as they occur. So next week, if we find out suddenly, yes, I can get these grade levels in because I have 12 or less in a classroom, you will know that. You will know that quickly. We're also going to do the best we can to coordinate siblings' schedules. So if you have two kiddos who are both doing the hybrid model, we will bend over backwards to try to make sure that they're on the same schedule to accommodate parents, because of course, that's going to make your life impossible if we can't do that. We also, a really great idea came to me, it was brought to me by someone else today, that this kind of like podding kind of situation. So for example, if Mrs. Frost and I both have kiddos who are in a hybrid model, and we are partnering to try to help with that daycare situation because both parents are working, then maybe we're able to put your kiddos in the same pod so that on Monday, a man, Mrs. Frost, works from home and supervises the kids because they're home on Monday, and then I work from home on Friday and supervise the kids on Friday so that everyone can get back to work a little bit better. It's not 100%. It's not perfect, but I'm just, we will do the best we can to do that, because we're small enough to be able to kind of take those requests. So when you're sending in the requests about, you know, or if you're giving me any email changes, or if you just already know, yes, I would like to partner with this family, and we've agreed upon that, please send me an email right away, and we'll do the very best we can to get that coordinated. And we're also working very hard to streamline our digital platform, so that if you have multiple students in multiple grades, you're going to the same place or using the same kind of platform, no matter which child you're working with, because we know that that was a bit of a struggle in the spring. And that is all. So that's, those are the plans. And so I can try to walk around a little bit?
Can we just sort of do one more?
Yes.
Yeah. A memo will go out tomorrow, and that means Monday at noon, if families need it.
Okay. So the memo is going to go out tomorrow, and we really need to know by Monday at noon time, so we can start really putting those schedules in place, and we'll know exactly and have a commitment from parents on what they're choosing for their first option. And then we are going to try very hard Wednesday to get that to you by Wednesday, by the close of the day on Wednesday.
A schedule.
A schedule. Yep.
So we have one question.
Yep. Nate, you had a question?
Great. So let's start with transportation. Have we reached out to the Downey 6th floor for transportation?
I don't know the answer to that.
Has anybody given that any consideration?
None at this time, but we're hoping that maybe, depending on what parents say when they reply by Monday, that maybe some of those students will be writing, and they won't have the same transportation challenges.
This also appears to me, this appears to me to be a town problem. It's not a state problem. It's not a Hancock problem. This is a mine problem. Do we own the range? Does the town own the grant?
It does not.
Okay. Has anybody reached out to the range to use that as a classroom place, or the church across the street, or the upstairs at the fire station, so we can bring more kids back?
So Nate, the problem with that is that I need more staff. So it's not, so it's about safety, right? And it's about space, and it's about supervision. So I can't, I can't make more people appear. And right now, when we do operate, we are very frugal with this, we try to be very frugal with this town budget. I don't have any extraneous staff. So for example, in this pandemic, we don't have a school nurse. Not because we haven't tried, but it's a one-day position. It's been a very difficult position to fill and keep someone in it. So there's no nurse or no guidance counselor. So other schools that have some of those other resources, they're able to leverage the human resources within the building to cover the students, because I wish I had extra staff. I would totally, totally do that.
Are we using this space as a classroom?
We're not using this space as a classroom, because again, I don't have another super, I don't have a staff to supervise it.
Now, on the full-time part, the parents?
Yep.
What if there is stay-home parents, stay-home parents that are going to come in and work those positions, even on a voluntary basis?
I may leave that to you to answer.
Well, that's a good point. That hasn't, that hasn't come up. In terms of the gymnasium use, students will be here for, for lunch so that they can take off their, their mask and breakfast as well. We anticipate, they may be in the classrooms, but ideally they'll be in here. So it's not out of the question that they could be in the gymnasium, but again, it's not an ideal classroom space certainly, other than outside of physical education. And it just, then it just, it displaces something else. I'm not sure about having students offsite, how that would work in terms of lunch. I know in terms of support staff, that might be challenging as they cover generally multiple students and have multiple rules within the building during, during the day.
On the idea of other buildings, I, I would worry also related to infrastructure, you know, there's a tremendous online component to the daily work that the teachers do. And if there's not adequate connectivity, you know, that would be an issue that would need to be solved before we could seriously consider another facility amongst other ones. So just to point that out.
So just also some other difficulties and challenges with an offsite, that would be worst case scenario for me because I would actually, you would need more staff. You couldn't just send one adult, right, with twelve kids because now, you know, something happens and you don't have another staff to kind of help out with that. So I mean, there are some other places in this building that I could use other than this. I can't use the front portable, there's no bathrooms out there, and they're locked out of this building, which is not feasible to get through a day with a bunch of students who are going to, who go to the bathroom a lot. Let's just, they do. And so, and we also are required by the state to have a, a sick room. So if anyone shows any symptoms during the day, that's where they have to go until they can leave school. So if that's a student, it's until someone can pick them up. If it's a staff person, it's until they can drive themselves away. So that will probably happen in the front portable. But again, I, you know, I have, I can, I have two classrooms that I could possibly utilize, but again, I just can't, I don't have supervision, I don't have the staff to put in there. Ms. Frost?
No, it's okay. I guess my question to that would be, would the parent have to be a qualified teacher? Because if they're separated from students, just throwing, no, I'm sorry, just throwing any parent volunteer is tricky because they're, they're responsible for the education of essentially that pod of students. So as a teacher, if we grow the grade up, I wouldn't want to have to teach the parent how to teach the students and then teach secretly to, do you know what I'm saying? Like it's more complicated, I think, than just the.
So it's tremendously, hold on a second, it's tremendously cumbersome and I apologize to do this because I always hate it when I'm sitting on the floor and this is the way that it happens, but let's try to, you know, let's try to, one person ask question, you know, on the mic so that everybody can hear it and it gets recorded and all that stuff. So, but along the lines too, when we bring in a staff member here, there's a background check component, there's an insurance component, there's, you know, I, I think we'd be opening ourselves up to sort of a potential problem if we were to rely on unemployed, you know, somebody that's a volunteer and didn't go through the full employment process. So if we're going to add people to fulfill needs, they should be staff, you know, however they get hired on.
So I'm, I'm just curious, how many teachers days do we have that come through here or substitute teachers that are fully certified teachers?
I, I can answer, well, can I answer that question? I don't have any certified teachers right now who are in an ed tech position. I, I have, there's a, a substitute that I, that I do have that is a certified teacher, but most of my, and, and let's open up the substitute conver, I just want to let you know, we have two subs on our list right now. We usually have more than that. People are not wanting to sub in this kind of an environment, so we're going to have a very difficult time when a teacher's out to find a sub.
But that's the point of Nate is, are ed techs aren't certified teachers?
Ed techs are not, they do not have to be certified teachers. They need a certain amount of schooling to be the ed tech threes that they are, but they're not certified teachers. They sometimes are, it's just happenstance that they might prefer that role.
But the, the important component in this that, you know, when the school is in session inside of the school building, the ed techs are support staff to the teacher in the classroom. So just like if you go to the doctor and you see a nurse practitioner or you see, you know, somebody who, what's the other?
P A.
Yeah, physician's assistant. They're not, they're not licensed doctors, but they go a lot and they work under the guidance and the supervision of a physician. So that's sort of the same model that happens here when it comes to ed techs and, and teachers in particular. So if we were to utilize ed techs in a remote aspect, you know, that would add that complication of still needing both an ed tech and a, you know, a licensed educator with that person in that facility.
Yeah. Regardless of any, any, any moving, any flex of staff requires new staff because also all of those ed techs are signed to students for student support. So I can't just, no, it's okay.
I'm not saying it would be a test, but let's go with that, the parent thing, like parents that are.
Yeah, you're trying to be creative, just like, I, I totally get it. Totally get it, Nate.
So I guess my, my last thing is, you guys did a wonderful job with that class. Don't get me wrong, so you guys did a great job with what you were given and the kids appreciate it.
Appreciate that.
Appreciate it. But the, the way you at home learning was, was highly, highly unacceptable. Are the kids, if they're at home learning, going to have access to that teacher all day long? Are they going to watch that class and see what's going on?
It will, I, I can tell you it won't be all day long. For example, so say I'm a fourth grade teacher and we're going outside for a ten minute mask break. I, I can't now supervise your, your child online, right? But what I can tell you is that our goal right now is moving towards, it's nine o'clock and that's when math is, so you'll be logging on and we'll be doing math together as a group and you'll be seeing that instruction. But there's a lot of transition that happens within a school day that it would not be possible for that teacher to be glued, right, to that.
Yeah, that, I guess that's not what I was saying.
Okay.
I meant like for all the classroom time. For the kid, be able, for the kids that have to be home, be able to follow that class all day long, as long as when they're in the classroom?
I can't promise that it will be all day long. I think we're gonna, we don't even know what we don't know yet in trying to do this. We have never tried to do this. We did the fully remote, but we have not tried to do it altogether. And I think there are going to be glitches just like we just saw. And you know, Mrs. Dime had a good example the other day. So she is, she's a scheduled person and boy, if she says math is happening at nine, she really does want to do math at nine. However, if, you know, now Johnny and Sammy have gotten in a little argument or someone has fallen down and skinned their knee and so she's dealing with that, or someone got sick or, or, or something happened, then there are going to be some glitches where, you know, your child might be at home waiting, sitting there like, do, 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 you know, whereas Mrs. Dime, it's, it's not her fault that it's not working or they can't hear. So to the best of our ability, we are going to keep students engaged in what's happening in that classroom as much as we can, as much as it's feasible. We have some things to get used to. We don't know how long these kids, it's hot in here. Having this on and trying to talk is really hard and it's going to be really hard for them. So we don't know how many mask breaks they're going to need. And it may be that, that Mrs. Dime, she doesn't have a lot of experience in remote teaching, but boy, she has a lot of experience with kids and she's going to see, if I don't get these kids out of here for five minutes for a mask break, things are going to fall apart. So there's going to have to be some understanding, I think, from the parents that when we're in this remote situation, that we're doing the best we can, but we also have to attend to the physical needs of the kiddos who are here too. And it wouldn't be fair to, you know, sit there in that mask for four hours without being able to take it off. I mean, I, I hope that answers your question a little bit.
I guess kind of follow up, I think, to maybe what Nate might be asking a little bit, is it safe to say since in most cases, our students have pretty much one teacher, one, one classroom, that if they are remote and let's say class starts at nine or eight thirty, whatever it is, that for the most part, even though there are going to be mask breaks and lunch breaks, that you're essentially logging in and going to remain with that class throughout the day as long as the other students who are in school that day are, are there. So it's not going to be necessarily, you're logging in for an hour and a half and then you've got five worksheets to do. The idea is that you are, that student is participating in the same thing that the students that are in class are participating in. One of those students are in class participating? Does that make sense?
So the answer is that that is, that is what we're shooting for. That is absolutely what we're trying to do. I, you know, I'm, I'm foreseeing little, little glitches and little struggles along the way. And any teacher wants to, to talk about those, I'd be, I'd be happy to let you, but it's just like those kinds of things that I just said, like all of a sudden, you know, we just, we just need to get these kids out of here or, but we're going to try as much as we can to whatever the kids here are getting, the kids at home are getting.
So that was the answer to my question. As long as they're in class, we're going to be able to follow along with that class?
They should ask.
Unless there's a computer glitch?
Unless there's a computer glitch. Now, I will be honest with you, there's going to have to be, that, that doesn't mean that there isn't, especially for the younger ones, isn't going to need to be some supervision on the other end. Because I can tell you, for example, what happened was I was actually leading a Google Classroom meet and a student figured out how to take over screen sharing away from me. So I had to kick him out of the classroom. I can't let them do that because I don't, I didn't know what he was going to share. I just knew he had taken it over and it was, I was, I had to shut it down, right? So we can't control those kinds of things. So there are going to be expectations and I will also, you know, go to that. So Mrs. Dime, the teachers have been creating remote learning protocols for students because they didn't know how to do it either. So we had kids literally laying in bed in their pajamas, pulling the blankets over their heads. Here's my cat, the cat's in the camera. Meet my goldfish. I had someone take it out and they were throwing the ball to the dog and that's all we could hear was the dog. So we just need to go over those protocols. We would like you to be dressed for school. We'd like you to be sitting up at a, at a desk or a table so that, you know, you're really following along. We don't want to see your bedroom or your sheets or, you know, that sort of thing. So, so we're, we're trying to get all of that ready so that the remote feeling, the remote learning feels as much like being here in person as possible to the, and again, if these numbers change, and I'm going to be honest with you, I think they're, I think they possibly could. As a parent right now, my, my child doesn't want to wear a mask, so he is choosing to do the remote. He did very well with it and he's a high school student and that's great. But I think I also had parents who said, well, I'm choosing in person, but we might find that the mask is too much and then we may go the other way. So if that happens, that's good because then I can make room for people who really need their kiddos to be here because they have to be at work. So we're absolutely going to change those as those numbers allow us to do it, we'll be on it.
One last question. I guess this goes to school board because the fields out back. Some of us believe we, you know, Illinois rec isn't part of the school, Illinois rec's part of the town. We believe we would like to have access to those fields out there and start doing some kind of, some kind of clinics and stuff, or at least the kids in our town.
So, I'm sorry, some kind of what?
Access to the fields.
Clinics, okay.
I'm told we've been denied access to the fields.
So the access to the field is allowed from now until students come back. We don't know what's going to happen at that point. It may be fine to continue access. One of the challenges we're looking at right now is oftentimes when we have groups here after school, you know, parents may be coaching and so their kids are on the playground and things like that. We just want to make sure we can adhere to any particular cleaning protocols that we need to do around that. But from now until, until school starts, it's fine.
We don't have an answer about the school, so.
School starts September eighth.
And with the fields for the rec, for Illinois rec.
When rec programs start?
Yes, so Illinois rec programs can start up, soccer clinics.
Like so many other things.
Other cities like Brewer have been running their rec programs all throughout without any issues.
The limitations that are put on us are not by choice, so.
Well, the limitations we're putting on ourselves are by choice.
So one avenue we're exploring around recess time is again, students, when they have their masks off, have to be six feet apart. If they have their masks on, we believe they'll be able to be on the play structure. So we've talked about things like making quadrants on the field where there are different things at each station and that quadrant is a classroom's primary space for, for a day and then they rotate through those stations. So in part, we're just not entirely sure that we're not going to need more of that space. Anything that we can do so that you can have access to the space is great because that means our students are moving around and the more movement, the, the better, obviously. So we'll do everything we can to, to make sure that we have as much access as possible, particularly outside. Inside, I would say, you know, I don't know about once basketball is going to come, but for right now, like we're saying, we're not having inside access even for, even for parents to start with. So we're just not going to know the answer to that for, for a little while. And I apologize for that. I know that's challenging and I appreciate your patience.
I don't, I don't, Nate, I don't know the details on Brewer thing.
Yeah, they've, they've been running their U programs all throughout the summer.
Right.
All the rec programs. They're running track and field right now. They, they have been, no issues.
I was just going to say, off the top of my head, my question would be, and I don't know the details of this, you probably know way more than I, but off the top of my head, my first thought is that it's a municipally owned facilities versus the school, which it seems like an insignificant distinction.
The school is the town. We keep forgetting the school is the town.
We, we are an independent.
This is our school.
You're absolutely right, but there, we are a legal entity that is a municipal school district and hence the, you know, main department of education can force us to comply with things that we may not want to comply with. So all I'm saying is that may be the distinction between the, the rec program availability in Brewer versus the difficulties that we've got here, so.
I think it'd be, well, we're looking into it.
Happy to.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have questions or comments?
No. Oh, I'm sorry.
So my daughter didn't, can you hear me?
Well, it's going, so.
So my daughter, she didn't take to the distance learning very well. She is behind. She's fallen way behind. My daughter can't even spell and she's supposed to be going into second grade. My concern is, are you going to get her caught up? Because I'm afraid she's going to be part of this lost generation if we don't get our children back to school.
So we, we certainly are going to do everything within our power to do that. Of course, that's the goal. We knew going into this that losing a chunk of time was going to be hurtful for these kids' education, right? We're, we're not alone, you're not alone because everyone across the country shut down in March. And so that is why we are trying to get every kid back as much as we can. It's not going to happen like this because they did lose. We've got to backtrack a little bit now. We're going to have to with all of our kids and we're going to be flexible with our grouping. So, so, so when I go back and I say what I said before, which is if more people go out and I can leverage students around to get more in the building, I will do that. But it might mean that it's not a straight third grade classroom or it's not a straight second grade classroom because I, like I said, I've got nineteen in third grade, so I'm going to need quite a few say they're going to go out before I can get all of those kids in there. But if I have just enough in a couple other grades, I can do some multi-age kind of stuff to kind of make room for that. I will tell you that we've got literacy people on, on staff. Miranda is going to be overboard, so we've changed some of her responsibilities. Whereas she was teaching an upper level GT ELA course, she's no longer going to be doing that, so we can leverage her to work with early literacy, trying to get kids where they need to be. So we're, we're, we're putting all of our creative juices into making that happen.
So I had to put in for EFMLA at my work and I had to part time homeschool my daughter and go to work part time. Thankfully they had that program. I don't think they have that grant anymore available to us. I don't know if the government's going to give us another one. My husband is disabled, so he did the best he could to get her, you know, caught up on whatever it was. But it was a battle for him every day, being a disabled man while I'm at work a few days a week. So I had to, a couple of days a week, you know, stay home and try to homeschool her. I'm not a qualified teacher. I wasn't, I didn't go to school for this. You guys did, you know? And for me, it's very, and for him, it's very difficult. We're struggling and she's struggling. Can I give you a suggestion? I work at a daycare center locally in town. It's a childcare facility. We take temperatures at the door. We have COVID related questions. We ask every parent about their child. We bring the child, the children into one door. We bring the child, the children into one door. They come in, they take their shoes off. We go right into our classrooms. I'm an assistant teacher. So we basically, we wash our hands when we walk in the door. We disinfect every two hours to make sure that our classroom is sterile. We don't have a janitor. We don't have the luxury of having a cleaning crew. The teachers, we have to do it ourselves every, our jobs are 10 times harder than they ever were. So believe me, I get it. Nobody wants their job to be 10 times harder. But you know what? We do it. We're successful. We're up to 10 children in our classrooms now. We have two classrooms open, three teachers, three assistant teachers. We're able to socially distance our children. I know they're toddlers and they're little and it's difficult. I mean, let me tell you, trying to socially distance a child isn't easy socially, a toddler. And I can't even imagine first, second, kindergartners. We do it for the parents so they can go back to work. We do it for the children so that they can have that experience of preschool, prepay, so that they can enter kindergarten and they're prepared. That's why we're doing it. And believe me, I'm 47 years old. I'm at risk, I'm at risk for this disease as well as a lot of other people and my family's at risk. But I do it every day and I go back to work because I know I have to do this. So it's just a suggestion as to how we, what our protocol is, and it's by CDC guidelines and state licensing that we follow, which I, obviously you guys are doing the same thing. But I think things can be, I think it can work.
We'll be doing all of those same things that you were talking about. We just can't put them closer than six feet apart and so I can't get desks in the classroom, any more than 12. I tried. We did it every configuration. I've spent days trying to do this. How do I leverage this? Hauling everything in the classrooms out. We literally are making teachers take everything home that would leverage any space. But I got built-in cabinets that I can't like pull apart and take out of the classrooms, right? I have, in this classroom over here, I can use this for a small number, but there's another room that's built into that. So you can't, I can only leverage so much space in there. So we are doing all of the things and I can probably guarantee you that these teachers, you know, they want to be here with all their kids. But legally and by the requirements, we can't fit more than 12 in the classroom. I wish we could.
Okay, so the school, the town of Machias is opening full-time, 100% school, traditional school. And we are a small school, just like Machias. So if they can do it, why can't we do it?
Because I don't.
Space and staffing.
Yeah, space and staffing. Like I said, I have two more spaces, but I don't have staff.
And so the substitute, as Nate had suggested, the substitute teacher. I'm an assistant teacher in my facility and I'm able to run my classroom when my lead teacher isn't there. So I don't, why is it any different?
So maybe Katrina can answer this a little bit better, but schools, it's just like the same answer for summer camps. Why can summer camps do the things that they're allowed to do and schools can't? Because they have a different set of rules that's put on them by the government. And that's a, that's like a Janet Mills, you know, main DOE kind of complaint, right? I don't know how, why they can do it and we're not allowed to, but we're not. And we also have strict guidelines about what we're able to do with teachers in the classroom. Teachers have to be certified. Substitutes do not have to be certified, but you, if you are in charge of the instruction, we have to. We get dinged and we get penalized if a teacher is not fully certified and we've got them teaching. So for example, if they're only certified to teach science, legally, they can't be teaching the other things, right? So we're just bound by those, bound. I wish it wasn't the case.
And I noticed that another, I have standard of staffing issue, but if you were able to get more staff in, I mean, because it would be wonderful if you could get more staff in. You have this beautiful gymnasium. Maybe if you get another shed or another building and attach it to the back of the, I mean, we're all paying taxes here to be, have our children educated and it's not happening. So it's just, these are just questions. I just open that up there.
It's an excellent point and it's a great question. And we're exploring everything from can we put a tent out back and have that set up as a permanent solution where students can have lunch and then we can do something different in here. And I think some, for some clarity around staffing, obviously, if we thought having more staffing would solve this, we would have just hired more teachers and hired more educational technicians. It's more about the spaces and the staffing, even if, you know, we've already used some of the spaces that we don't typically use for classrooms. I mean, we've got to split a third grade. There's a variety of pieces like that. So, but it would require, you know, additional space outside of the facility to do that. But we haven't given up. We're going to keep looking. And again, the numbers could change. We know that parents, you know, answered the best they could when they gave us the survey. We know we've had students move in. We know we've had a drop in the number of homeschool applications and some students that were homeschooled that are coming into the school system. We get all kinds of those changes and we're used to that every year. Unfortunately, this is, you know, sort of the worst summer for that to happen because the more change there is around those numbers, the more challenging it makes, makes it to set, set those pieces in stone. But our goal is to know by Monday afternoon so that we can go with the best-case scenario to get students here the maximum amount of time that we can and to know that by the middle of next week.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll do everything we can. And I appreciated the questions about the buses and, you know, additional, you know, down East transportation, all of those things, everything we can that we'll explore. And if there's something we haven't thought of, by all means, we are, we're open to any suggestions. We appreciate that and we truly do want a partnership with you and we know how difficult it is. It's, you know.
Thank you for your time.
You're so welcome. Thank you.
Katie, do you have any question?
So has there been any guidance from the CDC or the Department of Education as to how often you can revisit this plan?
Oh, it's been, it should be ongoing. It should be completely fluid. I mean, I'm going to be thinking about it all the time. I mean, the second I can get more kids in, I'm going to try to do that the best I can. So we won't be holding back in terms of making those good changes for you to get more kids into the building. So the guidance is, be always, there we go.
And this is, that's a great question. And this is one place I would say it's, it's easy for people to potentially compare district by district and maybe, you know, inadvertently pit schools against one another. You know, we're tiny. We can, we can turn on a dime more quickly than, than say in Ellsworth. So for us, if one student moves away and that means all of a sudden we can bring all of third grade back every single day, we could, we could do that really quickly. Whereas that might be very, very difficult for a larger system. So you will hear about plans where some districts are saying, this is the model we're going to go with through the end of the first trimester or through the end of the quarter. Our commitment is, we said, you know, let's, let's say that this is for the first month, this is for September, but realistically, if something changed a couple weeks in, and it's not a problem to transition, we would want to do that. We want to get our students back in. And I have heard that universally from our staff, they want to be back. It's much harder to do it this way than it is to be in person with their students. They want to be with their students.
Okay, one more thing. I've heard that there is a possibility of extra spacing if we just don't have the staff. If the teachers can do the synchronized learning, if your student can be home, being supervised by a parent or another guardian, whatever it is, why can't, if there is a parent or guardian that's available to come into that building, why can't we use that room as the same module as at their home? Synchronized learning in that classroom, wherever. The teacher isn't there to teach, but she's there to supervise the behavior that the kids are actually learning while the teacher is down the hall doing that video.
Yep, that's a good question, Katie. I would say back to the same answer that we talked about, so they would need to be, they would have to be an EdTech 3. We can't leave students without our guidance and our requirements from the main DOE is that unless they're an EdTech 3, they cannot be in charge of a group by themselves without a teacher there. I can put an EdTech 1 in a classroom with a teacher right there, but they can't be in charge of a group of students on their own. Again, you can do that at home, like you can choose whoever to babysit your kiddos, right? They don't need to. But we don't have that flexibility. We have very clear requirements.
So Nate's mentioned, Nate's mentioned earlier about the other facilities in town and the potential use of them. I think it'd be difficult to use it in official capacity as, as part or an extension of the Lemoine School. But that idea or that comment you just had there about using space with a teacher or a parent rather, that is the, is the guide or the overseer, that may be a really good solution if it was put together by a parent group, you know, in collaboration with the church or, you know, when they're done with the remodel of the, of the building down the road here, the.
The Grange.
The Grange, thank you. That, that kind of stuff, I've been jotting down notes and that's actually one of them. It's sort of utilize the existing facilities or common space or something like that and try to do a parent group and maybe patrons or, you know, some, somebody can form something or be the, sort of the anchor that sort of tries to make that happen potentially. Similarly, for transportation, you know, the transportation part that was talked about earlier, you know, those people who are able to maybe collect a few kids and bring them in, you know, in a carpool scenario, that would be a nice thing that would help out the transportation pressures that we have in official capacity. So what may be best for everybody and all the students would be, you know, some sort of parallel collaborative efforts with parents to try to, you know, fill in areas where we sort of just can't, you know, or are unable to for various reasons.
How are you going to differentiate who's going to stay home and who's going to go?
So what we're going to do in terms of, so those classrooms, so for example, third grade, we're going to try to start doing it family alphabetically, the best that we can, so that we keep the families here at the same time together. Because we have situations we know of that an older sibling might be able to help out. We have a lot of that that happens sometimes and if they, both parents had to be at work. So we'll start with that and then we'll take any requests and do the best we can to the extent of our ability. So for example, Katie, if you said, yep, I'm working with Danielle here and we're going to take some turns, so can you put our kids in the same pod? We would try to do that, to accommodate that, to help you out with that childcare piece, absolutely. So every, so if this is, if in your classroom, your child's classroom, it's going to be a hybrid model, meaning they're here half the time and they're home half the time. I don't know exactly what day yet or what that looks like. That's the information that we'll be getting to by Wednesday, once we have solid numbers and we know better.
I know you're saying they're going to try to put them on the same schedule, like Ethan will be on the same schedule as Daddy instead of crossing. That's just.
That's what we're going to try to.
Yeah. That's not the one priority yet.
I guess I'd like to ask you a question. One of the things we thought about in asking parents that needed a change, just email us, email Mrs. McPhail, you know, by Monday at noon, is because we were concerned that parents are surveyed out. We know there've been, we've had surveys, DOE's had surveys, there's been a lot of that. And so we were trying to make it that parents who we don't need to hear from, you can, you know, if you're all set, we're all set. But do you think people would prefer a short answer survey similar to what we had before where you can just record those answers right there and send those additional thoughts or comments in?
Yes.
Yes?
Okay.
I mean, I spoke with some people, they didn't even fill out the survey, so.
Yeah, okay. We had a really good return rate, actually really high, like I think we had maybe 20 that we didn't have.
And I made phone calls to respond and I got about half of those to respond. So I personally made phone calls and reached out and did emails to try to get as much data because, believe me, I can't tell you how I was so, even if it was a Saturday and I was at camp and I was on the beach and I would get a ding, then another survey came in and I would have to go find a dark spot where I could see who said what, if they were coming back or not. So I could keep track because it was pins and needles too, hoping that we could fit everybody in the building. So if we do another survey, I'm on the clock watching it again.
Jen?
All right, so I have a question because I know you said that you weren't going to plan on using the gym because you want for the cafeteria area. But you're, everything here is to see the part. I've added 20 chairs on this side and 20 on that. We have classrooms that can only do 12 at a time. Why can't we not do, I'm not so much like a split lunch or have them do lunch in the classrooms, but then have maybe like a curtain, even putting the mats up across so each, you can have two classrooms up here. I mean, that's 20 people socially distancing here on one side and coming on the other. I mean, I'm just curious to why we couldn't do something like that because that would make it another two grades that could come in and then, even if you had those rooms, why couldn't you have someone in there, like if you wanted to have an extra space for a kid, your kids could go and sit and eat, why couldn't they have those rooms? Because they don't need to be supervised in an educational standpoint to eat.
Oh, yes, they do. Have you ever been in a lunchroom? I mean, we absolutely do. We can't leave them alone. I mean, that's another legal obligation.
Do they need to have surveillance? Wouldn't you have like a parent that could help out? Be like a lunch school attendant? So do you have lunch to eat?
So those are, those are good questions. We can, you know, we can have some conversations about those. Here's one of the reasons why I'm very, I don't want to use this gym for a lot of reasons. I don't think that this is going to, I think we're doing, it's going to be a very difficult year. Cold weather's going to come very quickly. We can, we're going to try to do PE outside as much as we possibly can for as long as we possibly can. But we also, in September, get very rainy days. And now we've stuck kids in a classroom six feet apart, really can't move around the classroom because you have to stay six feet apart and they're in a mask. This is the only space I have where a teacher can say, it's pouring rain, but we can go take a mask break in the gym. And if we don't have this space available, we have no way to give them a mask break. So that's part of the reason why I'm super leery about using this room. And if we can get kids out of that space, they are, it is going to be very difficult for, you think about just your kids and how they are, right? None of us want to be sitting in one classroom staring at the same four walls all day long for eight hours in a mask. It's going to be hard. We're going to have to have some spaces to be able to be flexible. So if it's pouring rain and I'm in my classroom and I can't take my mask off and we can't have recess outside and now I've used this space and I cannot use this for an inside recess space, that's going to be a big problem too. So that's, that's the answer to the gym. I'm not saying it's off the table for me, but it's, it's kind of one of those last resort kind of things.
But also if you think about, we don't really have staff many rainy days and you are planning on hopefully going to be, you know, new guidelines, things change.
Sure, hope so.
Right now, we have four people that have a bad, but once they go, I mean, they have to be out and then.
Right.
I mean, that's what we like to do. So it's maybe the massage, the, I mean, it would actually pay off if the first, once it gets passed into the, like schooling.
Right.
I mean, it might be harder because of, you know, we're going to be stuck in the classroom all of the day, but at least they'll be able to get some structure from the crazy somewhere.
Yeah. No, absolutely, you're absolutely right. And I, and I hope one of, as much as anyone, I want, I want the guidance to change and I want the rules to loosen up. And as soon as they do, we will.
A couple of things I want to, well, two things I guess, I just want to comment on. All these ideas are good because even if the specific question, thank you, the specific question or the specific idea isn't feasible for whatever reason, you know, it may set a light bulb off in somebody's head that, you know, sends us another direction that helps things out. So if anybody has anything that pops in their head or has a question or wants clarification, send it to somebody, Dawn, you know, board members, whatever, and we'll make sure that the questions and the ideas get to the right people so that, you know, they can add that to their thought process. But for the people that are here and in particular, the people that are watching either via Zoom or who are watching on the TV channel, I really recommend everybody view this maybe a second time because we've covered a lot of stuff and, you know, anytime you spend an hour talking about various topics, something gets lost. So watch it a second time, give it some thought, send us questions, ideas, thoughts, you know, all of that, so.
I appreciate that you asked that question because, you know, that's important, you know, all of these questions together, it's better than people wondering, you know, why give us a great idea, so.
On that topic specifically, here, I'll get up this time, thank you. On that topic specifically about passing information around and getting it out there, some school districts have been sending out regular emails to students and parents and whatnot. There's, you know, up until in these recent week here or so, maybe two, there's been very little content. It's been, things are going as, they've been going and we're working really hard. So we haven't really sent out much information, which is, you know, some people would have probably preferred to hear that we're at least working on it, but primarily we haven't sent out much information because everything is so fluid and every week there are new requirements. So work that staff and administrative people had been doing to formulate a plan, they'd get a couple of weeks into it and then a new bit of requirement from the state or the CDC sort of scuttles that and you got to start all over. So apologies from me and the board, I suppose, I'll speak for the board on this, you know, for not getting more info out, but it's primarily because there's, the idea of sending out information that we then have to change because we're forced to change it, I thought would lead to more, you know, frustration than sort of the not knowing, I guess. So if anybody's upset about that, apologies, but that's the reasoning.
Dawn, anything we didn't cover that you think, just looking down through the memo that's going to go out and see.
I just wanted to make sure I understood, we haven't heard of these plans as a board until tonight as well as you have. And I want to make sure I understand it, Dawn and Katrina, what seems to be the preferable plan is Plan A. And if I understand it properly, you've explained that as these folks' kids would be here for 50% of the time. How do you divide the fifth day?
Do you want me to take it or just say what we've been talking about?
Is it every other week? Is that it? Two this week, three next week?
I think there's a range of possibilities.
Range of possibilities.
Well, one of which includes some of what you said, you know, we may have students that need more time and more support.
Yeah.
Prioritizing some of those things.
Yeah, that's a important question.
What we're looking at right now is, once we have the final numbers, can we prioritize that schedule based on what we believe the student needs are? And so, you know, that's sort of the trick of it. It's not just as simple as these kids are Monday, Tuesday, and these kids are Thursday, Friday, then what do you do with the Wednesday? We don't envision a plan where all kids are home and we're doing remote learning on Wednesday, even if all the teachers were here only because from what we've heard and talked with our teachers, there are other things they would like to see that happens with that time. So maybe in the morning we have students that need additional reading or mass support and maybe those students come in and we have very small groups and it's targeted. It could be a variety of pieces like that. We know our teachers are most definitely going to need more planning time, there's no question about that. So putting that schedule together is going to take into account all of those pieces to make sure they can best support learner needs while getting the students here as much as possible.
So what I just heard you say to me is that somebody else's kids are more important than mine to be in school three days out of one week? Is that what I just heard?
No. Is there a better way to say it?
I think what she was saying is there are some models that we've looked at that would take the academically highest need students and use one day for some RTI.
How are you guys going to decide who's academically needed?
That's when we do assess.
My kids are academically, they need to be.
They're all, they all need it, but what we do know is that some struggle more than others. That's why we have a special education program and 504s and those kinds of things. So there may be some students who instructionally, just like they instructionally need more support during a regular school day, not in a pandemic, everybody gets what they need is one of the things that we say to kids a lot. So could every child benefit from an extra adult supporting them throughout the day at school? Sure. Does every kid need an extra adult to support them all day long throughout the day? No. And so in a perfect world, we'd all be here five days. So that determination is going to be difficult and that hasn't even been determined yet. That is not a.
Quite what I meant.
Okay.
But yes, what you said.
Better stated, there are some things that we need to do in person. So for example, reading recovery, guided reading groups, there may be some things that we prioritize. Those are in person for additional time because those students are the youngest learners maybe and they need to be here for that, whereas the older students will still have additional learning, but they might be able to do that piece remotely. For example, it's just a difference between who might need to be here and might be able to be offsite during that time. So there's a variety of considerations.
One second, I'll just, the comment I'll add to that is functionally, that's not really any different than a regular day to day. You know, within a classroom for a particular subject, a teacher is going to spend more time with one student than they would with another student based on, you know, the needs of that individual student of that particular day or that particular subject. The difference, of course, is just this attendance component that we're struggling with, so.
Attendance component is very important. It's very important to these kids' social wellbeing. It's very important to their educational wellbeing. It's what we pay for.
I don't disagree with a single thing you've just said.
So Shayna's kids are no more important than mine to be here three days one week. It should be totally split if that's the case.
I think our commitment is that we need to keep listening to you folks and as Katrina said, consider this plan, a plan that is, or I guess Dawn did, is one that we need to improve upon as we go. We need, we've had to make some compromises, there's no question about that. And I believe that the administration in particular, the teachers on the committee that has thought about this have tried to work through every possibility. And we need to have a plan so you can count on what the plan is, right? And presumably we'll improve the plan as we go. That's our commitment to you.
Kids are enrolled in Lemoine School.
I'd like to add one more comment, we'll come back to your question. One more comment, and that is that if we don't all get everybody in the community of Lemoine to cooperate with whatever the plan is and be careful about how they communicate with each other and be careful about the possibility of infecting somebody in the school community within these walls, no plan is going to be any good. So this all starts, this all starts with every one of us and everybody else in Lemoine and everybody else that you folks work with in Ellsworth or Brewer or Cherryfield, whoever it is, and being properly careful about who we communicate with and what we communicate and transmitting that kind of information, if there's an issue with a positive somewhere, transmitting that issue, that information to the school so that we all know about it and can do something about it before we have to shut the school totally down. We always have to keep that in the, right in the foreground of our thinking about this. So whatever the plan is, it's a compromise and I hope as a board member that it's the best we can do by your kids for the next month and that within a month's time we'll be doing better. So it's up to you folks to let us know if we aren't. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, when this started, we, you know, everybody was saying, give it a couple of weeks, three weeks, it was four weeks, then it was six weeks. This has been a huge burden and it's tasking everybody in a million different ways, you know. Nate's a builder, building materials aren't available like they should be, you know, just everything has gone crazy, supply chains for just daily life. But it is a temporary period of time and we are, you know, unhappily but enduring it. So I do think it's important to keep that in mind that this is not going to be the norm forever. This is going to have a course and it's going to run its course, so.
We're at 116 right now, so the question about the number is 116. And so I'm completely, we looked at ways to flex kids into other groups so we could get as many here as possible, but the total number, it's more about how many I can put in each room. It still comes down to that.
Hold on, Nikki, you have a question?
Nikki, do you want to?
I just had a question about scheduling. And if we're going to get an advanced schedule, is there some kind of like question to be changed or are we going to be?
Yes. That's what we're getting those concrete commitments from next, by Monday, so that we can put in plans so that you know, these are the days. And I hope I'm able to tell more people that it's 100% of the time. And it's all going to depend on the commitments I get from parents that are going to choose the remote. Nikki?
I have a kind of similar couple of questions and then just feedback. At first I want to say thank you to everybody who's been working so hard because I personally know that it takes months but in years and you've been working since March 13th. That was great stuff. Thank you very much. My first question really is about the schedule because I do think that a lot of anxiety that's created in our community, I will give you feedback to say that I think it's because of the lack of communication and we think that has been difficult for families. But in saying that, I'm wondering if you do have a solid date, once you figure out your information, I do think it's fair that our families understand what that level looks like because as you know, there are several different models. So is there a solid date when you understand what days our kids will be using?
You weren't clear about.
What, Wednesday?
We have that next Wednesday.
That's why we want the information back, the commitment by Monday, so we can have it to you by Wednesday and if we have it ready sooner, I'll pop it out sooner.
I have an assumption on this and I just think it would probably be helpful if stated in the meeting or coming in for it. So if somebody does choose remote or they do choose in school, are they locked in for a period of time or are they able to go back there?
So we'll be able to give more solid information about that. So here's the thing that's really easy. If someone is saying, I want to be in person and then they get three days in and they're like, my kid is miserable, I want to go fully remote, that's an easy fix for us. The hard fix is coming back because like you said, our numbers are so tight, we're trying to get to that 12. If I have someone who wants to switch on a dime and say, well, now we want to come back, that's not going to work. It's just like, it's just like calling in and asking to go on a different bus when you don't usually ride the bus and I don't have room for you. So we'll be pretty specific, I think, when the details come out on Wednesday about how long you're locked in for or on the survey even.
But realistically, you will be locked in for a while in terms of coming back if it means that we have to totally change the model, there will be a period of time. What we're not saying is, we don't believe it will be a trimester, but in fairness, it would be a period of time. There's challenges around that.
Did you not hear that?
It seems to have been to the community. We, you don't have a great answer about that. That's just the honest truth and I don't know anybody that does agree with that other than saying, no, you can't change your mind once you picked it for a whole trimester. We don't have to do that.
Do you have thoughts on the distance learning? It's my professional opinion that physical me is not as effective as Zoom. I know that this one has pretty good stance on if they didn't want to use Zoom. Are you, have you made a decision on that or are you trying to work to that? I do think which is the happening, we will very much attack the kids who have chosen to go there or actively move.
We are looking at that. We are looking carefully at that, but I don't have a solid answer for you as of yet. My concern, there were some things happening Zoom nationwide that were not good. And so the, you know, the safety, emotional safety kind of issue was the first and foremost in my mind, which is why I instructed my teachers to not use Zoom, but we have been practically using it right now. So we're trying to learn the best platforms and the best way to give our kids distance learning as we can.
My last question, just to give back is about your living. I guess I would recommend that, I know it's difficult, so I definitely think families will know that you're going to try to do that, but I would have maybe also looked geographically because I do know that, you know, neighborhoods really have become the only social rock that kids have. And so not only parents helping each other, but also kids being there in times of loneliness could help. So, I mean, personally, like I know there's a lot of kids in the harbor area, right? So I know that's not perfect to say like this part of town and that part of town and certainly there might be people that request across town that you work together, but there are a lot of neighborhood streets, so that might be interesting. And again, I'll just finalize by saying communication, I think, will reduce a lot of the anxiety that you're seeing that maybe comes up and misunderstanding between now and September 8th.
Those are good, those are good points.
Can you incorporate that into the survey that you didn't give us that, that feedback around, you know, neighborhoods and pieces that might work that way for you because we think that's a great potential for parents to be able to help each other out.
Katie, did you want clarification or did you not hear something?
No, I have some other questions.
Okay. Go ahead, please.
So one is about transportation. I heard the number of 26 kids on a bus. Does that mean if my two kids are in the same household, they can sit by side by side and that will maximize more spacing for the children?
It doesn't increase the number of students we can put on a bus, but they will be sitting together. So in order to maximize that space, we do have to have siblings sitting together. We have a specific way that we are told we need to load the buses right now. So that means if you're the first student picked up on that bus run, you go all the way to the back of the bus and then we fill in, we close off seats that aren't able to be utilized. You will have your seat, that is your seat that you have to sit in every day, but siblings will sit together, but it doesn't maximize it because we still have to keep, well, we're putting them together because they live together and it's safe to do so. It's a good idea.
One more suggestion for maybe the survey that you're going to put out. So as parents, we may or may not know what other parents' choices are, if they've decided to just do a 100% homeschooling or whatever their choice is. So if you could put out a question to parents saying, if you're homeschooling or if you're available, would you be willing to take on other kids in your, and just communicate it that way so we're not running around town asking 10 different families? Maybe the school could provide a list of people that are available to take in two kids on Monday, you know, a couple of kids on this day.
I don't see why we couldn't put a checkbox on there for people to indicate that and figure out a way that we can share that, you know, if you check the box and you're giving your consent for us to be able to share that, I think that could possibly work.
I think the consent part, the silliest things are in the world today, I think that consent part, like, so if we have a question like that on there and there's a, you know, a component to it that says, you know, do you consent to having this information shared with other parents? You know, if you're, please look for that if you're inclined to provide that, kind of help neighbors. So that way we can share that information without worrying about privacy laws of some sort or another, so.
Parent information, we wouldn't share student information.
Right, yeah.
The parent information.
And then bouncing off that, maybe there's, you know, there are other people in the community that don't have students. Maybe they're the retired teacher or a grandparent, whatever, but they're still willing to help out. Can we communicate to the towns, maybe put out some survey that way?
That's a good idea.
Thank you.
Yep. I think that's a good idea. I'm getting a lot of nods back here, so I think that is something that we can certainly look into and see if we can find some support for you out there in terms of childcare on those days.
Did she have something?
What she said was maybe that's something they could do at the Grange or the church. And again, because of liability issues, we wouldn't set that up, but we could get people in touch with each, with people to do that, just like I wouldn't, I wouldn't send someone to a babysitter, that's not my, I would never do that because if something goes wrong, it's back on me. But certainly to facilitate just the ball rolling and then kind of someone else maybe, it may be up to parents to kind of follow up with that and keep that going. I can tell you that just like you said, doing work this way is 10 times harder than it ever used to be. So, you know, I'm exhausted, everybody's exhausted and we haven't even started yet, right? And well, it's going to be great and I want to be back here with kids and I will be smiling and hopefully my clear ones will come so they can see that I'm smiling because, you know, I will be their cheerleader from day one and get them in here as quick as I can because I love them and I miss them and, you know, this is not the way we want to do business.
So I think we're going to, I'm going to ask if anybody has any other comments or questions and we'll address those, but I think we're probably about done for the night, hour and a half or so. For those folks that have endured the Zoom, I assume the production was not as good as it should have been, I wanted to let them know that the town should be recording the meeting on the cameras that are mounted permanently in the gym. So if you wanted to review this again shortly, I think Stu is going to put it up on the town channel and on the stream, which is a web only if you don't have cable TV in town. So it might be easier for you to look at that. The other thing too, if anybody made any comments in the Zoom, I think we're going to try to make an attempt at reviewing those comments. So we'll try to get your input if you give us input in that medium, so. If there's any other questions, we'll take them. If not, I think we're done for the evening. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Shayna, do you have a question? No, or you say bye? Thank you.